Hello, welcome everyone to the Wednesday, May 25th, 2022 Franklin Public Schools Board of Education meeting. To have a roll call, please.
Yes, Dr. Khan.
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Wackowski is on the phone. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
We are all present with Mrs. Wackowski on the phone.
Mrs. Wackowski, can you affirm that you are present? You have to unmute.
She's definitely lost. We've definitely lost her.
Okay.
While they're working on that, the meeting has been properly posted. Could we stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wackowski, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, thank you. We just needed you to affirm that you were present. Thank you.
Sorry, the call is dropped for some reason.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda approval, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda and also consensus to change a few items around in their order. Move up the tobacco poster contest winners and Dr. Khan needs to be excused a little early. So we're also going to, I'd like to move up 11A and 11B, the personnel and policy issues more forward in the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All right, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, board members and directors, parents and community members. I'm incredibly proud to be standing in front of you to share examples of our core values of personal growth, innovation and stewardship happening and alive and well at Ben Franklin Elementary School.
Sorry, I was telling your parents they can stand on this side if they want to see. It's hard to see.
Parents, if you want to get a picture, please feel free to come around. There's nothing sacred back here.
Come on down. We're all friendly.
Sorry, Mary.
No, it's okay. But there's some candy for the kids. I'll take that.
You can advance this slide.
Tonight, I'm standing in front of a very special group of fifth graders. I've chosen to showcase this group of students because they began their career at Ben Franklin in kindergarten the same year I began working in Franklin Public Schools. It was also the same year that Franklin Public Schools implemented the units of study for writer's workshop. So professionally, it is a beautiful thing for me to see this begin to grow in kindergartners who are pictured there and some of them are here, to see them grow and then have it show up in amazing ways in their writing pieces. There's an anchor chart next to the picture of these kindergartners, or fifth graders now. The anchor chart reminds us that when you think you're done, you've just begun. And as kindergarten students and beyond, writers are encouraged to think of an idea, say it out loud, sketch it, and add words. And then part of that process, even kindergartners began to go back and look at their work and elaborate and add more. As these writers grew and became more sophisticated, so did their skills and understanding of the writing process. Writers quickly learned that what you don't, that you don't just write one piece and then you're finished. You continue to work to improve your writing by moving through the process of the writing, the writing process. Writers rehearse. They rehearse an idea, they draft, and then they edit. Even a published piece can continue to go through the process again and again. Ewan today, I'm going to tell a funny story. Ewan was actually revising and editing his work as we were going. So it was kind of nice to see that this continues on and these are some writers that have taken on all of these habits. So the beauty of writing for any classroom teacher is that it creates an opportunity to have a student's thinking made visible and it provides a window into their hearts. So tonight, these students will share their thoughts, ideas, heartbreak, accomplishments and creations by reading an excerpt of their writing. So please sit back and enjoy their work.
Hi, I'm Ewan O'Neil. I'm in Mrs. Buzniewski's fifth grade class. I love music, reading and baseball, and I'm going to be telling you about my story. I chose this writing piece because it is my favorite and it is the one that shows how hard I worked in writing. My story is called Golden Girl. It is about a girl that got in a car crash and got superpowers. What happens next is shocking. "Hey Dad, where are we going again?" I ask. "We're going on a trip in our big black van," Dad replies. He's just bragging, I think. He just won a new car, a Honda conversion van. It's supposed to be able to withstand bullets, car crashes and anything along that matter. Mom looks ahead and starts shouting, "Honey, look out!" There was a car in the middle of the highway. The driver was nowhere to be seen. "We'll be fine. This car is said to be able to withstand car crashes," Dad shouts over me and Mom screaming. Bang! Our car hits the small sedan. "Can our car withstand an explosion?" "No," Dad shouts. Boom. Ow, everything hurts. We were in a car crash and now I'm back at scene of the car crash? I could swear I was just in a hospital bed. Now I'm back at scene of the car crash? It's taped off with caution tape so people don't run into the broken car husks with their cars. I look in the taped off area and there are broken metal husks of the car that I was in and the one that we crashed into. They're motionless, lifeless husks of what they once were. I can only recognize them because I recognize the surrounding area. It smells like smoke. I look at the oncoming traffic menacingly. Some random guy is texting, which you shouldn't do while driving. The random guy doesn't see me. When the guy looks up, when he sees me, his eyes go wide. He's about to hit a girl. Wait a second, that car reminds me of something. That's it, I think I remember that car from the accident. It's not the exact same, but I don't care. I run up to meet the car like I actually believe I'm going to stop the car. I pull my fist back and yell from the depths of my heart, "Smash!" Thank God for all that time I spent binge watching My Hero Academia. Boom! The metal crumples like it's Play-Doh, the windows shatter into a million dangerous pieces and the driver faints, which is definitely not normal for a 15-year-old girl to be punching cars and breaking them. So I have teleportation and super strength. Huh, well that sure is something. The police turn to look at me. They're looking at me like I'm a reject from a real-life X-Men. Oh yeah, well I guess I'm not supposed to be here either, so, well, peace. And suddenly I'm back in my hospital bed surrounded by wires, nurses and doctors. Well, that's enough heroing for me today, I think, I think, as I fall into a long dream of sleep.
And for you.
Hi, my name is Savannah and I'll be reading to you Lost. I chose this writing piece because it shows so much emotion and it shows what I was going through for a while. My story kind of teaches a lesson that even when things get rough, you can always break through and make it better. Sometimes in life, you lose things, for example, a pet or a family member. My family had a wonderful, handsome, black lab named Jack. He was, in my opinion, the best dog in the world. Shortly after September 2021, my parents got me another adorable puppy in which we named Milo. Roughly halfway through the year, Jack wasn't eating very much and his back legs weren't working properly. About three days later, we made the hard decision to put him down. It was a gloomy Saturday morning. As I saw the big white van with the hard night pull-up, it was like a goblin waiting to take Jack away from us. My heart shattered into a thousand pieces. "What are they going to do with him after he's put down?" I thought to myself. I was devastated. I'd had him my whole life and I wasn't ready to give that up. My eyes stared to water, my head spitting out of control, thoughts racing around my head like water does on a waterfall. I'm pacing around the front living room, half wanting to pick Jack up and run out the door so the vets wouldn't take him away from me. As they approached the door, I quickly run to Jack to say goodbye. Ding dong! Oh no, they're here already? Everything was going by so fast. I could tell we all felt deep sorrow. Creak! The door opens slowly. "Hello, my name is Nikki and this is Bob," said the veterinarians. If you want to read more, please click on my name in the presentation.
Nice.
Hi, my name is Kira Severson. I'm 11 years old and I am in fifth grade. I've been going to Ben Franklin since kindergarten. I chose this piece because I liked the feeling I put into it. I also just enjoyed writing it. My story is historical fiction and it is called Lost in the Titanic. It is about a girl on the Titanic moving to America from England with her mom, her friend and her friend's family. She gets lost on the boat and then it starts to sink. My main character's name is Mariah and her friend is Brianna. At this point in the story, Mariah is on the lifeboat. This is the part I would like to share. "Mariah," Brianna's dad starts. "Where's Brianna?" Tears fill my eyes. "I, I start, I'm so sorry," I say. Tears drip down my cheeks like the tears when I had heard my father had died. Her parents look at each other with sad eyes. "Brianna," she's, I start, my voice trails off. "She's dead," I cry, hugging my mom. Just this thought of it made my heart want to ache. The little boat sways back and forth on the cold water like the song my father used to sing to me when I was little. Brianna's parents were crying. If you want to read more, please click on my name in the presentation.
Hi, I am Amys and I am 11 years old. I am in fifth grade. I enjoy, I enjoy doing arts and craft and spending time outside. I choose this piece because I am student council and I enjoy it. Who makes decisions about spirit days and Ben assemblies at Ben Franklin? You might be surprised if find out that it isn't teachers, it is students. The students on Ben Franklin Student Council. Student Council members are third to fifth grade grades who wrote a speech to get votes from their classmates to be on student council. Each third to through fifth grade class gets two student council representatives before Ben Franklin has 12 student councils members. With all their amazing learning that students receive at Ben Franklin, you might be wondering when do these students have time to meet and make their decisions? The student council members are willing to give up their plunge times about twice a month to meet and talk about spirit days, plans, Ben assemblies and food drives. At Ben Franklin, adults clearly know that students have a better understanding about other students like. Third, fourth and fifth graders have experience of what spirit days have been the most fun and which activities student persevered in the most at Ben Franklin, which is why student councils make decisions about the whole school's spirit days, which these here have considered of Disney Day, Hawaiian Day, Crazy Hair Day, just to name a few. We have also helped to pick out activities done during Ben assemblies which have included a Hoohoo relay, marble race, button game, creating cards to bring cheer to our neighbors at a local retirement home. We gather over 400 items for the food drive this year. Student Council's evening got new things for the playground at school, like jump ropes, basketballs, soccer balls, just to name a few things. So how does this information go from 12 students to get the whole school? Student Council makes posters for spirit days that get hung around school a week before so that students and teachers are reminded that it is coming up. Student Councils also make videos for the Ben assemblies of how to play games, which helps the Ben assemblies run smoothly and more for all students. Student Council also makes announcements over the loudspeakers to give updates on the amount of food donated for our food drive and encourage students to keep bringing in items so that Ben Franklin can reach their school goal. As you can see, Ben Franklin Student Council members work not only in their academics but also in creating school decisions that impact the culture at Ben Franklin. Next year, come visit Ben Franklin on a spirit day and get involved in the fun.
Hi, I am Tara. I'm 11 years old and I'm in fifth grade. I have been going to Ben Franklin since first grade and I enjoy spending time outside. I chose this story because the humorous chatter between my characters reminds me of the funny arguing between me and my sister. In my story, my characters find a weird machine that turns them into really tiny people and they must find the machine to turn back to normal again. This is a piece of my writing I want to share. "How come everyone is acting like that doesn't exist?" asked Chad. "I don't know, maybe it's invisible to them," said Robert. "That's stupid," said Chad. "But what if it is?" said Robert. The friends went to the shrinkinator, then zap, the kids turned back to normal. "And back to my old self again," exclaimed Robert. Then all of a sudden, poof, the machine disappeared and life was pretty normal till I saw Timmy on the sidewalk as a tiny person. If you want to read more, please click on my name in the presentation.
Hello, my name is Amar and I am 11 years old and I am in fifth grade. I enjoy spending time with my friends. I chose this piece because of the detailed description and the real problem I put into my story. I'll be reading the beginning of my story. I hate veggies. Ellie was upstairs building a small dollhouse for her rag dolls out of bright wooden building blocks. Her two rag dolls lay beside her, one was more raggy than the other. Ellie honestly liked that one better because it had longer, she had it longer than the other one. Her brother Jack was running around her room. If you would like to read more, please click on my name in the presentation. Thank you and good night.
Hi, I am Eva Nock and I have been going to Ben Franklin for six years now. I am 10 years old and I enjoy playing softball and basketball. I chose my historical fiction writing piece because I had a whole bunch of emotion, feeling and action into it and it was my favorite topic and story to write. My story is about five girls who got caught in the Great Chicago Fire while they were all going on a walk. It is called Lost in the Great Chicago Fire. As they kept walking down the alley, the scent, the sound and the hot air touching their skin got even worse, but the four girls kept on walking. Suddenly, they walked past the barn and now they could see flames breaking out everywhere. If you want to read more, please click on my name in the presentation.
Hi, my name is Wesley Dundun. I'm in Mrs. B's class and I'm 11 years old. I love music and art. This is a story about the time I got hit in the mouth because it was, because it was a problem I will never forget and a situation that caused a lot of trauma. Also, I enjoyed writing the story. I stepped up and got into my batting stance. A really good pitcher was throwing fast and hard pitches, so I was a little nervous. The ground was shaking like a stampede was heading right to me. The pitcher gives me one strike and two balls. Bang, bang, bang! Two strikes, two balls. And bang! I hit a grounder to third and made it to first base. I was ready for someone to hit a ball, but one person got out, so I was going to either get home or not. I was pretty proud of myself for making that good of a hit. My coach was pretty proud of me too. My team was so happy that they might win. Now, most of the time, I either get striked out or caught out, so I was ready to run as faster than I've ever ran before. My coach said, "Whenever I say, whenever I say run, you, whenever I say run, you go." Coach said, "Go, go, go!" So I push off the base and I'm, and I'm running, and I'm running through, and I'm running through second to third. The dust that was trading off my shoes was almost like a tornado. Then I got on my, I got on my glove and went out, and I went out to second base. Mason is up, one of my friends from baseball. He was a pretty good hitter and he hit a line drive straight to me. Bang, bang, bang! Blood was everywhere. The game stopped, just like the story.
Oh.
If you want to read, if you want to read more, please click on my name in the prescription.
I also want to thank Mrs. Buzniewski. I think she's in the audience here. There she is. Thank you for all of your hard work too. So fifth graders, you may be moving off and on to Forest Park Middle School, but don't forget where you came from and also know, and we all know this, even though you think you're done, you've only just begun. So, thank you, everyone.
Fifth grader's really good job. You showed a lot of boys.
I told you guys last week, great things are happening at Ben Franklin. There they are.
You are showing that for sure.
And there's two students who couldn't join us, but their work is on there too and you have a presentation, so click on it and read away. We will, thank you.
Thank you.
The tobacco poster awards? There's no awards for tobacco, we all know that. Tobacco is not the award. It's the tobacco poster.
All right, we will move that to the June agenda. I think Ms. Henry over at the health department had a conflict this evening, so little miscommunication there, but we'll look forward to seeing those children in June. Thank you.
All right, we will move on quickly to, to 11A and B and then we'll come back to community comment. But does anybody that signed up to comment have a comment that, that pertains to either, either policy that's being considered tonight? Okay, great, thank you. All right, personnel and policy, policy 5212, school and district web content. Dr. Khan and Ms. Alinsky, please.
So we are having two policies today. One is 521, 5212, which is the web content and then another policy is 4132, acceptable use of policy. So I will start with the web content policy 521, 5212. This policy was last reviewed in 2015. We just added minor changes where we removed the word wiki and then also added the language to have access to everyone, including students with disabilities, you know, for the web content as such. So I'd like to, if everybody has got a chance to read the policies, I'd like to make a motion to get it approved, please.
All right, motion's been made.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Policy 4132. Dr. Khan, please.
The policy 4132 is acceptable use of policy. This policy was last reviewed in 2015. We again made minor changes to the language, removed old technology which was used like iPod touch and netbooks from the policy, which right now no one is using it, and also made it clear about the access of the public, open public records. Anybody uses the technology or any of the devices is open to the public and the administration has access to it and that each and every individual is responsible for making that they're using it for the right means and as such. Has anybody, any questions specifically to the acceptable use policy by the staff members?
I found something on page five where the thing that you changed was staff devices as opposed to teachers laptops. And then if you go on further, it says, "Our property of the district and all use of the laptop," and I think that should be devices.
Oh yeah, very good. That's actually page four.
That's page four?
Yeah.
Oh, there is?
There is no page five. That's how I figured it out.
No. I wasn't that good. And then I was curious, on the first page, the part that was changed was eliminating and networks unless the expectation is granted by law and yet, under administrative rules, we have and networks unless expectation is granted by law is still there. Were we trying to eliminate that completely or just in this one spot? Because there are no...
It should be both. I'm not sure why it wasn't. Do you know?
It should be in both places. I think it was just a missed.
Should be taken out in both places.
Correct.
Right.
Good catches, Alan.
That's it.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
I move that we accept the policy as, with the two changes proposed by Dr. Mr. Alexandrovich. Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I will move, we'll move ahead with community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of Franklin Public Schools or parent guardian of Franklin Public School District students. Must state for the record their full name and address and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment, either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item. Per board policy, administrative rules 8300. Beth Rydeski, please.
I would like Mrs. Karalevich to make her statement first.
Right.
I'll let her go first. Anything else?
Mary Karalevich, 8208 West Coventry Drive. I'm here tonight as the representative of the Certified Franklin Secretary's Office and Education Assistance Union to tell you what an amazing support and professional staff Franklin Public Schools has. Every day, we provide our students with opportunities to grow as individuals, as friends, as learners and as citizens. We provide the foundation necessary for them to succeed in college, the business world and in life. We are there to wipe a tear, bandage knees, clean up a lunch mess, listen to their stories, calm their fears and anxieties, watch them play, sing and dance. We support all children who walk through our doors and into our classrooms without prejudice or judgment because all children can learn and will thrive in the encouraging, stable environment that we provide. Our offices are staffed by welcoming and caring professionals who are on duty even when they are not on the clock. Families walking into our school will receive a smiling and receptive greeting and their concerns will be addressed as quickly and efficiently as possible. Whether in the office, in the classroom or working with students who need extra support to meet the goals of their IEPs, Franklin's support staff is vital to the smooth daily operation of our schools so that our students feel safe, secure and wanted. Our families can be confident that their children are receiving the best quality education possible. Last week, when I met with Ms. Domrez and Mr. Milzer to talk about compensation, I was very disappointed that we would only be offered a 2% wage increase, not the full 4.7% CPI wage increase allowed for the next school year. This was very surprising for a number of reasons. A 4% increase will not, 4.7% increase will not cover the current 8.3% inflation rate and accepting a 2% increase would actually be a 2.7% pay cut in our real inflation-adjusted earnings. For the approximate 10% of my members who are full-time and have an insurance benefit, a 2% increase will not cover the cost of the district's health insurance premium increase of 3% that Mr. Milzer mentioned at the May 11th school board meeting. For the rest of the sports staff in my unit, a wage increase of 4.7% is the only financial benefit that we are eligible for because we are not full-time employees nor are we eligible for health insurance or FMLA should we need it. or FMLA should we need it. Our disadvantage is saving the district money. Retention of our school support staff is vital in any district, but you should know that this year alone Franklin experienced support staff turnover of 26%. In the last four years alone, the district has hired upward of 80 new SOEA members to replace those who have left. And I can tell you that most of the new hires were not hired due to retirements. By the way, that number of 80 comprises more than half of our current 133-member unit. And from what I've heard from my coworkers, the attrition rate of our support staff may be continuing. Is the intention of the district to be constantly hiring and training new employees to help our students? Consider the constant staff turnover effect affects... I'm sorry. Consider how the constant staff turnover affects the learning environment that we prize so much. How does turnover negatively impact relationships among staff, students, and families? Another contributing factor to the turnover may be the fact that there is no wage scale or schedule that values experience and service to our district, as well as the fact that many of us have suffered reduced hours or days on the job. Are you aware that 28% of Franklin's support staff who return this year make less than last year due to these reductions, including myself? If we are working so hard to be certain that our children are treated equitably, why should not the employees be afforded the same respect and equity in their most important jobs? Lastly, we realize that state school funding for Franklin is essentially zero. But we believe that a 4.7% cost of living increase for support staff members is very affordable. If provided to us, it would amount to about $130,000. We have considered that the district has had a $1.2 million fiscal surplus in the latest years that we have records for, and that the district has a cumulative surplus of over $9.2 million over the past 10 years. And that's over the monies that have actually been spent on educating Franklin students. Having funds available at this time that will help to retain staff who can provide the quality education that this community has come to expect should be a priority for the board. Would it not be wise to consider the time and effort that has been needed to train many of your current staff and let them know that they are appreciated, valued, and worthy of the 4.7% wage increase for the upcoming school year? As I was told by one of my newer members, education is a stressful, demanding, and at times very physical job. It requires qualified, dedicated, and collaborative staff members working together for the benefit of all of our children and for our community. Education is definitely not for the faint of heart, but it is of the heart. Our children deserve no less than the best, and neither do we. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Rydeski.
My name is, my full name is Elizabeth Rydeski. I am a Franklin resident. My own children graduated the school district in 2014, 2015, and 2017. Went on to Marquette, all very successful. And I thought Franklin was all that and a bag of chips. And I started working at the high school in September as a building substitute. And as you probably know, that's contracted out through teachers on call. And then in December, I moved over as a CCEA into our special ed department. So, I'm now across categorical aid. When I moved from a building substitute who is not an official district employee, I was making $200 a day. So, if you do the math, about $1,000 a week. Now, I'm making 60% of that as an aide in the special ed department as a district employee. And I think that speaks a lot to how the aides in my department, and two of them are sitting behind me. They're not Franklin residents, so they're not allowed to speak, but they're my visual aide. We feel truly like the redheaded stepchildren of the district, at least again, this is me speaking. So, I have some examples of some of the things that we deal with just in our special ed department. There are, we started out, when I started in December, there were 12 aides. In March, one of our aides left for a better-paying job. So, that left us 11. One went on maternity leave, which left us short-staffed as well. So, we had to, she's been gone about a month now, I think. So, we had to do some adjusting for there. And another one is leaving to go on to school at the end of the school year. So, that leaves nine or 10 of us core that have been there the rest of the year. And I can say, because I did a survey, only two of the 10 left are extremely committed to returning next year. If another opportunity came along, I think we would lose many of our CCEAs in our department because we also, my visual aide here, Abby here, is getting over a black eye from being hit by a student. One of our autistic students, he does not know what he's doing. We have another autistic student, and Dion can speak to this one, who can become violent. She has hit, she has bit, she has scratched, she has kicked. She's knocked over another one of our employees, one of our coworkers, so hard that she hit her head on the ground, and Dion had to help her off off the ground. Again, the student had no idea what she was doing. But those are the kinds of things that, at the high school, we are dealing with. And again, to feel that a contracted employee from outside the district is getting paid more than we are is kind of a shock. Because I like to have my facts. I went and I looked on the district website, and the coherence plan here, the three-year plan for '21 to '24, "A Better Place to Work." Definition, Franklin Public Schools is a community of valued employees committed to and invested in the mission, vision, and values of the school district. Valued. In the core values, the first one is equity. Now, I know that equity for our students is very important, and we strive to do that with all of the children, at least in our department, who come from a range of cognitive, emotional, and behavioral, I call them different abilities, not disabilities. They're different abilities. And I love my job. I'm glad I made that switch. But I think, again, if you value your employees, you need to show that, and unfortunately, through salary and benefits. My husband is going to retire anywhere from two months to two years. I will have nothing. I won't have insurance. Sorry. So, I left my contact information, my card.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abigail McGann, please.
I am not a resident anymore, but I am a district employee at high school.
Then it's your call if you, non-residents typically have to have permission to speak.
What does the board feel?
Yeah, I'm resident.
Are you addressing the same thing that Mrs. Karalevich and the, I'm sorry, Mrs. Rydeski also said? I think that... Yeah?
Please.
Thank you.
Please.
Sure.
Sure. Please keep your remarks to three minutes.
Sure. Thank you. My name's Abigail McCann. I was a Franklin resident my whole life up until probably two years ago. I'm an alumni of Franklin High School and the grade schools, middle school. And I'm proud of it until I started working at Franklin and really seeing what our district turned into. I absolutely loved being a Franklin alumni. It's an amazing community, amazing teachers, amazing people, amazing children. And I am really proud of the people I work with and the kids that I get to work with every day. I absolutely love it. I am one of the two that would be staying next year, not because of, let's just say, I am disappointed about the wages and the no benefits and not being full-time because I think we really do deserve that, based on some examples that were stated by Beth. But because I love the job. I love the good kids that I work with every day, day in, day out. I am a CCEA. I do work with the Special Education Department, and I also work in the classrooms. I go, and within our four blocks, I go to two classes within a class period, and that's a lot of work to do. And I'm not working with just one student in that class period half the time. Sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three, maybe four. I've dealt with modifying things, and in my job description, that's not in there. And I basically am an acting teacher half the time and dealing with our students, taking them out, administering tests, looking up information that is going to help benefit them with their schooling based on the academic criteria that's being taught. I help them with their projects. I help them with their schoolwork, sending emails, making sure the teachers know that mom and dad may be contacted when needed, staying on top of everything that is needed in order to educate our children properly and up to the extent that they deserve. It's a rough job, not gonna lie. I have a black eye, as was stated, not because the student knew, but because it's part of the job. When you come in, you don't know that. It's a shock to the system, not knowing that, you know, maybe today you're gonna get pinched, next day you might get punched, maybe sworn at, you may be yelled at by our students. And you take it because it is our job, and it's about the students. And in order to benefit our students, we need the respect, the kindness, the care, the love as well. And I don't see that being valued high enough for us. And that's why I think we're seeing such a decrease in EAs wanting to come back. There's talks through almost every single EA that I work with that they don't want to come back to work next year because of the environment that we work in. I won't keep reiterating on, but I just wanted to make it known that as an alumni of Franklin and being, living in this community my whole life, it's really disappointing to see the unacknowledgement that our really core workers see on a daily basis. And we need to see more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Khan.
Thank you.
Michelle Winkie, please.
Good evening, and once again. I didn't see any invites on social media tonight. I really would like that you guys would just, if you want people to come to this, you want parents involved, the community involved, how is it difficult to put an invite on social media? Everything else is posted on there. Second of all, last time I spoke about transparency, now I told you I have one son coming back next year out of the three kids. Again, that's speaking partially on what these staff have said, too, of this district becoming a disappointment on many grounds. I want to know what my kid is learning in school next year. I don't want to be surprised when my kid comes home and says, "Oh, I learned all about the COVID vaccine," which happened last year with my son, who was in second grade at that time. And I don't need them to learn about different religions if we cannot learn about all religions. And then they're watching videos about that. And again, I spoke with parents, it's happening again this year. Then, my bigger thing here is because I'm, I hit a brick wall. Like I said, my son's coming back, he's in eighth grade. And there are five kids that are seventh graders taking, I am one currently for math. And the, my understanding is they always just went up with, they're seventh graders now, they're with eighth graders. And what I've heard from other parents who have experienced it, the eighth graders would go to the high school and do some math and maybe science or something, but apparently that's changed. I got an email and a phone call from Mr. Mizziak at the middle school and said that they're gonna outsource my child's education for math. And if that isn't a big red plague, what we've learned about online learning, it's garbage, it's not the best education for these kids. I don't care if there's a math teacher in that classroom who's not teaching them and just sitting there maybe answering questions. I would assume through this district, we have somebody, a math teacher, who is certified to teach sixth through 12th grade. It can't just stop at eighth grade. You're, out of all these math teachers. And when I asked Mr. Mizziak about this, he said, "Well, I think it's the best interest, and they're not on the buses." And I get some of those points, they're with, you know, in the school. But when I started asking about this WHEN program, I don't know if you've heard of it, I don't know anything about it. They've never done it with math. They did it with a gymnast once, okay? They did it with some electronics thing in high school, okay? But never with math and never with younger students who are double-advanced in math. So, basically, our five children are guinea pigs to see if this is gonna work or not. I don't know who this teacher is, and I asked, and he said this was the best decision for these kids, I asked him, "Well, how does this program work? Is it a live teacher who's teaching this? Or is it a recorded something, you click a link? I don't know, I'll find out." "Well, are these kids gonna be using the same book, the Carnegie I Am 2 that the high school students are gonna be using?" "I don't know, I'll talk to our coordinating, our curriculum coordinator." Well, this was Friday when I popped in at the school, which was, you know, he, there was a fight. A boy and a girl were fighting, he took his time away from that, and he actually did talk to me, so good for him, I appreciate that. Like, someone just said that the front desk and the support staff, they do make time. The front office was great. But to not know and say this is the best thing and not to be able to tell me what book they're gonna use and if it's a live thing, that tells me this is a money thing, that this is a disadvantage to these five students who are basically kind of shunned or have to be secret that they're the smart kids. Because as the principal at the high school a few months ago said, "We're gonna get rid of these honors classes." And he said something about being, he was in honors biology, he was a smart kid. And we know how that is frowned upon if a kid is considered smart because it's not equitable. But it's fine if a kid can be praised for being a jock and doing this touchdown or whatever, or the, you know, some other award. But a smart kid cannot be a smart kid in this district anymore. The honors classes are being taken away. And I have to tell my son, you can't tell kids that you basically are a smart kid. And we've had this talk, which is so sad because these kids are very smart, intelligent kids, and they're just a little bit advanced in one subject. But they can't, you know, boast, and I don't even boast isn't even the right word, but they, I tell my son, just to kind of hide it. So, with that, I just don't know where to get these answers from, Mr. Mizziak. I don't even know if it's his name. It's not call me back or give me the information, what we talked about Friday. I know it's been three days, but still, I'd like some answers. I'd like to know how Franklin is gonna outsource our education for these five kids. How is that equitable? Equitable's the number-one thing on your list. This is not equitable. These five kids are gonna be put at a disadvantage, and I'm very disappointed. And as I've said, I have three kids. Two are not coming back to this district, partially of some of the stuff I heard about those teachers speaking at the beginning, and the support staff, this district is going downhill. I've been here for 15 years, minus 10 months between houses. And we came here for the schools. And I am not happy with the schools, and now I'm gonna have to pay private education for two of my kids because, as I've been completely honest with you guys of our struggles, our good things, our bad things, my whole, since I've been joining you guys here, I'm open with you, and I had a conversation with one of you last meeting, talking personally, who suggested that maybe my daughter has a learning disability. Never met my daughter, no. Her writing is subpar. It is not what those fifth graders are, it's not even close. It is at a third-grade level at my best thing. It is because of the education she received here. She does not have a disability. I've done through the testing stuff, maybe dyslexic a little bit, I thought at first. I've done through the testing stuff, maybe dyslexic a little bit, I thought at first, but that's it. But to have a board member who's never met my child even say that once, twice, or three times in a conversation is just wrong and is upsetting. And I'm counting down, I have five years with my older son, I don't know where my other two are gonna go. But as of right now, it doesn't look like this is the district to be in, not one bit. And apparently, the staff feels that way, parents and community members are feeling that way. We need to build this district up because I want to be part of a district that people are fighting to get into and people are succeeding to get in to, and the staff too, and the kids. And that's just what I want to be part of, and I want my kids to be part of that. And right now, they're not part of it, and it's a shame, it's a shame. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Bono. Sorry, I hope I didn't mispronounce your name too badly. It's not okay.
I am not a resident of Franklin, but I'm a senior at the high school, and I still approve to speak.
You're a student, yes.
Yeah, you're a student.
Okay, okay, just double checking. Okay, today I am speaking on relevance of 13L, which is part of the future agenda, but I'm making a comment now. I am a senior currently graduating off of Franklin, and I have been a member of music and music education and band since fifth grade. I've done the full curriculum experience. And I kind of just wanted to tell my story about who I am as a graduating senior and why the board should take into account their decisions in the future. I started band in fifth grade and, at Country Dell, that's where I attended elementary from first grade. And I absolutely fell in love with instruments. I am a resident of Milwaukee, so we open and roll into Franklin. My parents have trust and guarantee in the curriculum, and definitely music was a great part of that besides the education. And education goes into music as it's a teacher, too. So I absolutely fell in love with band through fifth and sixth grade. It was kind of average level, didn't really shine through the stars as a prodigy, but never fell behind, I was right at baseline. It wasn't until seventh grade where one of my current music educations, Joshua Warner, had met me. He works at, he worked at the time at Ben Franklin and as well as Forest Park. And he worked with me. He, we would have times in, during the class day where we would go out and have music lessons, which happened many years ago. And many of the times, because I was a responsible student who did what was told, it would just be me and him. And many of times, he would ask me, have you ever been to music lessons before? What age did you start playing flute at? And I would say, you know, just a few years ago, like, why? He was like, you're astounding, like, I've never heard something like this before. He gave me faith, like, for the first time in my whole life. I've always just been an average student attending Franklin. And so I was excited, I was reaching out, I would go home and practice for hours because I loved playing my instrument. Mr. Warner said, hey, would you be interested in joining the middle school jazz band? It'd be something fun to do, and if you love playing flute, why not join this? So sure, I would wake up early three times a week, go to the middle school, and play with many of my friends that I would call my best friends today, I've known since seventh grade. And I would spend hours with them in the morning at jazz cabaret, at concerts, that's where I built the foundation. Coming into high school, I was hesitant because marching band was introduced. And while that was something new, I'd be spending hours of my time outside of school working on this. I was hesitant, but I was willing to learn, it's something I've never done before. And with Mr. Warner's help, with Ms. Miracle's help, with Ms. Umhefer's help, with Mr. Dunmire's help, I truly don't believe that I would be as successful as I am today. For reference, through my senior year, it's probably a success story. I was our current 2021 Homecoming Queen, I work a part-time apprenticeship. I spent four years in tennis, I did four years of forensics. I've spent at our highest level of band for three years through audition. I've spent numerous and numerous amounts of hours outside of school from nighttime to midnight, to bus rides and friendships and laughs and countless amounts of times. And while Ms. Umhefer, Mr. Dunmire, Mr. Warner, Ms. Miracle are my educators, I can say with great confidence that post-graduation, I'll keep in contact with them. Without a doubt, I'll come back to the high school to meet with them, to talk with them, because they've seen me grow since seventh grade. They've seen me, you know, become hesitant at something at first to being overly successful. I'm going to college next year, UW-Madison, where they're renounced for their band. And without that, there would be no, without the teachers, there wouldn't be this shock factor. So I truly believe that while with my passion and risk-taking, the educator's there to push me, to keep me going, to not let me fall back and say, well, I really had a crappy day, maybe I'll just quit band. They're like, well, think about all the friends that you've made, think about all the happy times. And that's why I love what I do, that's why I love volunteering my time at music events, spending my weekends, spending 6:00 AM to midnight, you know, spending time with band. So I just think about me, think about many students that had experience like me, think about my family who opened and rolled me into this district, and what that would do to our music educators. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move along to item six, the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements by school board members, anybody have any announcements? All right, school board calendar, regular board of education meeting Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00. And a regular board of education meeting Wednesday, July 13th, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00. District administrator update, Dr. Miller, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin this evening by recognizing how devastating the last 31 hours have been for our entire country. And I would ask at this time that we take a moment of silence for the children and the families that were impacted by the horrific tragedy that occurred at Robb Elementary School in Yovilla, Texas. Thank you. These past two weeks in our school district have been busy. There have been a number of concerts and school activities occurring in our schools. Among those activities was our 4K preview nights, and we were pleased to welcome our 4K families and help our parents learn more about what their children will be experiencing in school next fall. Another important event last week was our senior honors night. I'm proud to share that we had 133 students invited to that program. These students were honored for their academic, athletic, artistic, and scholarship by the school and the community. We're incredibly proud of our seniors and we're thankful for the partnerships that we have to recognize their successes. Finally, I'd like to share that tomorrow morning, we'll be sharing breakfast with our business and industry partners, who are members of our Saber Business Alliance. Our partnership with the business community is extremely important to us and will ultimately strengthen our workforce. The experiences they provide our students are valuable in exposing them to careers they wouldn't ordinarily consider. Along with work-based experiences, we need to continue to have our business partners help us advance and advocate funding for K-12 education. Without it, we will have fewer resources to introduce to our students to a variety of career opportunities. There are many different ways to get involved in the Saber Business Alliance. We have a great coordinator, his name's Andy Thompson, and he'd be happy to talk to anyone who'd like to get involved. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item 10, reports, presentations, and other school board business technology update, Ms. Zalinski, please.
Good evening, thanks for allowing me some time tonight to give you an update on some of the things that we've been working on in the technology department. I oversee three areas, kind of the, we've talked before, the technical kind of nuts and bolts of things, the instructional technology in terms of what's happening in our classroom, and also our library media services. And so I'm gonna share a little bit about what we've been up to this past year, with, share some stories, some successes, and kind of celebrate some of the work that we've done. So we'll start with the nuts and bolts, the technical things, the dry boring stuff probably for many of you. Just want to share with you a few things that we've been working on. As I've shared with you in the past, we've joined a partnership called We Can. That partnership is with other school districts and cities and municipalities throughout Waukesha County to provide us with some shared networking services through our fiber networks. Exciting to now have redundancy, meaning that we have two ways to the internet. So if fiber was to get caught or something were to happen, we can reroute our traffic in another direction through that partnership. We will also be, soon, I think it might be on the next slide, adding on another partner to our fiber build to Alverno with Oak Creek School District, who will be joining into that network as well and connecting in with us. That will get some cost savings back through that partnership. We've replaced some virtual servers, if you think about where, can I call it the brains of the operation? The, the equipment that holds all of our systems on it. And just a reminder that we also updated our Wi-Fi in our elementary schools through our E-Rate discount program. So E-Rate, we can apply for every year for certain components that run on the network. There's restrictions as to what that can entail, but it can entail some of our Wi-Fi equipment, our internet service, and we get like a 40% discount back through that program. So we continue to take advantage of that discount every year to save the district money and continue to be able to upgrade our systems to stay current with our networks. And as always, we always replace some computers, we did some this year, there's always a replacement cycle. We replaced devices, if you recall, every five years for staff devices and, and classroom devices. And so there were some updates done this year for our video production lab at the high school, as well as here at the district office. Coming next year, to overshadow a few things, our E-Rate discounts, we'll be working at, looking at some switches, which is the equipment in the closets behind the scenes at our elementary and high school. The equipment currently in there is no longer supported, or won't be coming up here, so we will be updating that equipment. We'll be looking at replacing projection units with TVs next year at the high school, similar to the setup if you've been, you've been at the middle school that we constructed. And our plan will be, hopefully next summer, we'll be able to do the elementary schools. Dr. Miller can attest, as well as many of the teachers, the projection systems in our classrooms are getting very faint, very difficult for kids to see what's on the screen without the lights off and being dark and those things. So we're, we're in the process of finally making those replacements. A couple other big areas, SAN is an acronym, but basically means file storage, storage space for our servers. That equipment also is hitting end of life, and we will need to come up with a replacement solution for that here this summer. And similarly, our printers are over like 10 years old, most of them, 10 to 15. So we're getting to a point where we need to kind of do a, instead of a onesie-twosie here and there, overhaul of our printing system. We'll be taking a look at that for the summer as well. So those are some of the technical things and the equipment pieces that we are working on. Just want to share with you, because my technical team doesn't come to board meetings, maybe ever, these are the four guys that work on my team that are behind the scenes taking care of all these things. And I just want to, you know, shout out to Don, Sean, Jay, and Sean, who keep things running and operational every, every year and to put their, they don't know I put their pictures out here, but, but their faces, some names to the faces of the people who do our work. Moving on to the technology in the classroom, while I could share lots of great things that are happening, I want to highlight just a few things from, a couple things from each level that to share with you. Some moments that you'll see, some short video clips of some things that kids are using and how they're using technology. I'll start with some first graders using a product called Jamboard. Jamboard is like a collaborative digital whiteboard. And the, one of the skills that we want students to do is be able to retell stories that they've read, show understanding, know what the central message is. So students use Jamboard, you see their pictures here with them holding up their books and then using like the little sticky note feature to be able to reshare that story in the Jamboard software. The next group of students are our first graders and scientists, one of the units, they had to create a playground that would protect students from UV rays. And so they could see that they did that with paper, and, and you could see those pictures. And then they took a picture of that into Jamboard and then shared again on those sticky notes what they learned about that in science and explained how their, their playgrounds that they designed would protect students from the UV rays. This is a second grader researching non-fiction topics for their book clubs. They, she created, they created a poster, and I'm gonna share a little video clip here. Flipgrid is a software that is used to do video discussions. And so they recorded herself in Flipgrid sharing out her book. And this is about the 30-second clip I'm gonna hopefully go to here. Oh, it's gonna kick me out there.
Hi, I'm Cameron, and today I will teach you about frogs. Frogs are amphibians that eat flies, rats, and sometimes other frogs. Fun fact, frogs always eat the body of a fly before wings because wings have less nutrition. What frogs look like, frog's texture can be bumpy or smooth depending on where they live. Frogs that are the color of the rainbow are poisonous. And green, brown, or tan frogs are normal swamp frogs. Now that you know the basics, go read Frogs by Gary Underwood.
Another second grade classroom has a virtual field trip buddies with the high school child development capstone course. So I'm gonna show just a real quick, quick, a quick clip of students. We're learning about cows in this virtual connection, and they're playing a game using a software called Kahoot. And Kahoot is that they buzz in with what they think the answer is. And I think just the excitement of the kids' faces is pretty, pretty fun. Great partnership between our elementary-age students and our high school, our high school capstone classes who are at that level of child development coursework at their, at the high school level. All right, moving on to middle school. They can still be cute and exciting, too, I know. So these are some middle school students in their social studies class. They created websites or webpages using Google Sites about a conflict in US history. So they're gonna share with you their website and what they created.
Okay, so basically for US Studies, we made a website about a conflict in US history.
And then we researched both sides of the conflict and talked about the unity and diversity of both sides and how that affected the interactions with each side.
So I can show you my website I made, and I focused on the Boston Tea Party. And what I showed was how, some background knowledge, an important person, which I did with Samuel Adams. I did an important group, so I was talking about the Sons of Liberty. And then that's just a picture. And then up here, you can switch tabs. This is my American colonist side that I focused on. So we have what they wanted, what they believed, the unity and diversity. For the British, it's the same thing. So what they wanted, what they believed, unity and diversity. And went more in depth of like their goals of how they work together and how their diversity affected the way they like interacted with the other side. And then the reflection tab. And then the reflection tab focused on like, why was there conflict and which side would you side with? And then also, how did each side view each other? And kind of how you're biased to it. So like what, like if you're a US citizen, would you side with the US side or more of that stuff? Artifacts, also like primary sources. So like maps and articles and journals. And then lastly, we include all of our sources on the back.
What did you guys think about this project? Did you like making the website?
I feel like it's like better than just like kind of writing it on paper because it was like more intriguing, I guess, than rather just like writing it all on a paper.
Yeah, it was like better than writing it off because it was like more.
We had more time to work with like, you know, adding pictures to it.
With like just like brand paper, you have the hard time adding the pictures and artifacts and all that stuff.
And it was just like more fun than like writing it down.
All right. Onto, onto high school. So one of the new things we did at high school this year in our math department is looking for some alternative technology tools to the smart board. Our high school math department is one of the only departments that still had smart boards in their classrooms. And smart boards, again, are 10 plus 15 years old, starting to have issues with them. And we thought we could do better than what the, I want to say old technologies, there's still uses for smart boards in classrooms. But some of the things they needed was more flexibility to move around the classroom while still being able to interact and not be tied to the front of the room at a smart board. So as you can see, I'm going to have a teacher share some things. In this picture, you can see the teacher here with the smart board while working with a student. Here you can see the teacher standing up while she's drawing, using a software or an app called annotate.net that allows her to write over top of and model examples of content in math. And you can see some more pictures here, different teachers, and it allows them to both either demonstrate things at the board, works in small groups, take their device with them, hand the device over to a student for them to be able to model something that they may have learned and so forth. So this is one of our teachers, Shelby Bog, who's going to just share a few minutes about her experience and what she likes about the new configuration and pilot.
Hello. The Flipbook Chromebook has provided many advantages for me thus far. One advantage of the Flipbook is that I am better able to model, to model, excuse me, annotation to my students as well as work and thought organization. The stylus provides the option of a thinner writing line, which allows me to mark text more clearly and add in additional notes and ideas. The writing line on the smart board is much thicker, which made it more difficult to clearly annotate and model for students without needing multiple smart board slides. With only needing one slide or one page, with the Flipbook, students are then able to see like potentially like a whole concept or a whole problem, whereas sometimes with the smart board to get in everything that we needed, sometimes we needed multiple pages or like more than the screen could show all at the same time. I'm also better able to color code in my annotating and modeling for students to help them more clearly see connections between different parts of our work so that we can color code similar or connected pieces of information throughout a process so we can see how that goes throughout a problem or a concept. I am also able to be much more mobile in my classroom with the Flipbook Chromebook. Rather than needing to be at the front of the room to write on my board, I can write on the board from any point in my classroom. The additional mobility has increased my ability to monitor student progress and catch points of confusion even earlier when we are having that whole group instruction time in class. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. And similar to the IT guys, just want to shout out to our ITL team. Big thanks to Mandy Adams and Rebecca Benedict, our technology integration system specialists who work with the teachers on using technology in their classrooms. Rebecca works with mostly our K-8 teachers, Mandy our 912 teachers. And then we also have two or three teachers on every level who also are tech go-tos. They're teaching full-time but are also always boots in the ground in the building. Teachers can go to more for things like in the fly, maybe troubleshooting something or needing help with something, maybe less on the integration, I'm not sure how to use this program or do this. So this is our team that helps support teachers in the buildings. And my last area is to just highlight a few things from our library services team. Sora is one of our online ebook software or tool through the state. We, our checkout numbers are rising, I believe, let me look at my notes. We had 33,430 books checked out this school year. We were number one in the state, topping out any other district by about seven to eight thousand, seven to eight thousand checkouts. Shout out to Jill Pogless, our library media system specialist and her team and the aides in the libraries for promoting the ebook usage. There's some great additional new features that they're promoting as well. You could, the kids can jot notes through the software. They can highlight things, they can change different text colors for those visual students who need a different text color and so forth. This year, they've added magazines into the digital collection as well as graphic novel collection. So that's been a real exciting continued growth for our, for our students to have access to digital books as well as paper books. We haven't stopped buying paper books. There's just, you know, higher volume of those checked out as well. But gives students an opportunity, they're at home, they want a different book, they can quickly go on, grab something immediately and not have to wait till the next day for, you know, to get a paper book if they choose as well. Second thing that's going to be coming new is our, it's like the old card catalog, but it's all digital, our electronic catalog. Some new functionalities and features come out to make it more act-like, to make it clickable. And something really exciting that our library media team is excited about is that when you search for a topic like Harry Potter, it will give you like books like Harry Potter in addition to Harry Potter. So if that's a genre or a book of interest to them, it'll give them a further expand their search criteria so they can find other books of similar interests. And lastly, we continue to have partnerships with our public library. And Jill does a great job of connecting with them and meeting with them and them sharing programming that is happening through our public library system and getting that information out through our school newsletters and to our students for any of the exciting activities that are happening through the public library. And one more shout out to our team. You can see Jill is our system specialist up in our left-hand corner, but our ITL aides, our individuals who work in our libraries throughout the day, they do both the technology and library services side of the house in supporting our Chromebooks as well as supporting students with their reading, library needs, research, and so forth in our libraries. And really proud of this team. They, Jill does a great job of leading them and, and bringing them, their skill level up to be able to support kids in a very professional and exciting way with learning. And that is the end. Any questions?
You mentioned a lot of apps used by different levels. Are those apps, do we have like for second, for second grade, is there an app that all, all the different elementary schools would use the same one? And the reason I ask is because I assume they cost something?
Yeah, so we don't have a set of standard apps that we use at particular grade levels, I would say. We are really good about finding apps that are free. So the apps that you saw, there's free versions and paid versions. And so we try to work within the free versions. There's only one app that we're paying a service fee for currently in terms of a product, and it's called WeVideo. It is a tool that students can show their learning through creation of videos. In terms of that, I shouldn't say that's the only, we pay for Adobe Creative Suite for art and a few things like Silver Tech ad-specific applications and some of those pieces. But most of these, what I would call kind of universal tools that are good for all kids, we try to use the free versions of as much as we can.
Thank you.
With those apps, just piggybacking on that, is there any education that you give to the parents on how to use that? Like if the kid is at home and having to use Flipgrid or, you know, something else, is there any kind of a parent tip sheet or anything like that?
Yeah, and probably nothing specific to parents, but we have a student site that the students have access to kind of the tip sheets and the how-to guides of how to use some of those applications. So through that avenue, together as a partnership with your child, you would be able to look at that as a reference. Of course, their websites also have a lot of good resources and tutorials as well. But I would say that would be your best option would to look at the student site that shows how to use those tools.
Just ask one more question real quick. And the Sora, you talked about how, you know, we have the highest number of checkouts. I think half of them probably come from my house. Is there any, what, what, like, is there anything, because I had a parent ask me about a younger child. Is there any limit to what a child can pick out from Sora? Like if you're a second grader, do you have access to high school level kind of things or where are the cutoffs there?
I don't want to answer 100%, but I'm pretty sure, remember Jill saying that there are certain, it is, there is a cutoff. There is some restrictions as to what the different ages, like they would, we don't put all books in an elementary library. So I am going to say I'm 90% sure that that is a true statement, that there are limits.
Anybody else have a question?
You know what, I'm going to ask one more question. Sorry. With your, the conversion from projection to the TV screens, and I think the TVs you're talking about are kind of similar to what we're using here.
Correct.
Do the projections not work at all or they're just not as good? And in terms of, like, I guess what I'm getting at is, are you going to just take them out and toss them or are they going to stay as kind of like a backup for the TV? And just more clarification, the reason I'm asking is I was in a classroom today where the TV actually wasn't working. And that you had an entire class of seniors trying to give their capstone presentations, and they ended up using the projector on a blank wall instead of the TV. So is that going to still kind of be there as a crutch for when the TVs don't work or how does that?
Yeah, so two things. We will be taking them all out. Do they physically turn on? Yes. Are they to the quality that we need for instruction? Most of them are not, as we talked about the, even changing the bulbs, the brightness just isn't there. If we have to close the blinds, turn off the lights, and you know, it's pretty dark. I don't, we don't want to spend all day in a dark classroom either. So the TV will provide that. We will definitely keep any of them in our, we feel are good quality and functioning for twofold. One, for the reason you just described, and two, our elementary ones are in dire need of replacement as well. And this past year, it was a nine-month wait to get any replacement projectors. So we will certainly hang on to them that are usable and swap them out and try to improve our elementary setup this summer as well to get us through one more year before we can replace all of them with TVs. But we do that currently even with projection units. They go out and a teacher needs a spare or something in the interim until we can get it fixed or repaired or replaced.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Ms. Zelinski. Communications plan update, Mr. Kafka, please.
Pictures of my kids always go well at the start of a presentation.
Butter my stuff, you know?
Oh, it didn't work. It went away. All right, thing good to go. There we go. Perfect. All right, good evening. Glad to be with you again. I gave, my last communications update was part of the communications plan refresh that we did over this last year, presented that to you in January, and I gave a little bit of an update then as to our communication efforts. Normally I do the one a year update, so that's what this is tonight. But my plan for tonight is to go through and kind of update you on that communications plan, the one that's from 2021 all the way through 2024, and just give you some status updates, kind of like I've done in the past. And then part two of the presentation will be just updates since January, some of our communication efforts and things that I've actively been involved in, and then some Q and A at the end. So as part of your board packet, on Friday, this was the one-page executive brief that outlines the overall plan without getting into multiple pages. So as you remember, the communications plan is broken into these three areas. And I plan to go through those three areas and highlight the tactics and the strategies under here and then give you some updates as to where those, those things are at. So when I go through and I give you the status updates, I will do similar to what I've done in the past. I'll kind of mark things as gathering phase, meaning we're collecting some ideas or doing some research or looking at how we best want to attack that tactic. It might be in the developing phase, meaning that we're actively working on whatever that might be. We've passed the research and now we're working to try to implement. And then the kind of top level is the ongoing, meaning it might be a tactic that we're close to completing or that is near the finishing phase or that's at a place where it's become part of our normal processes and procedures. And so I'll highlight that as we go as well. So area one, just as a reminder, area one focuses on our key messaging and how we're telling the Franklin Public Schools story, focusing on being consistent, concise, relatable. This includes our mission, our vision, our values, our core values, and just tying back to those messages of what we're doing as a district with better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community. So specifically, one of the strategies in this area is building consistency in those communications using our key messages. And so this first area, this first tactic, I'll just kind of sum them up a little bit as we go. But this one has to do with just working with district leaders anytime we are communicating and tying back to that key messaging for our mission, our vision, our values, anytime we're communicating out to various audiences, whether it be parents, community, students, staff. And so my work in that, and this is why this is kind of in the developing phase, is we're constantly developing that. When principals or leaders are working on messages, we're constantly collaborating and thinking, how can we tie this back to our messaging? What core value does this hit? Where does this tie into our mission or vision or values? And so there's a lot of collaboration on the messaging that we put out. What we're planning for with continued work in this area is just specifically really hitting back to those core values. And obviously with a new superintendent, new district leader coming on, making sure that we're incorporating the mission, vision, and values into the messages that she puts out as well. The second tactic in this area is correlating our messaging into more of a one place for our leaders and for our staff. And so a big part of this role is the communications role, which we didn't have until a few years ago, is how can we best organize that information? We have a situation at a school and we have to send out a message. It's usually us pulling up an old message from somewhere, finding it in an old email, and then just making sure that we update it to whatever the current message needs to be. So part of the communications plan was really, and you'll see this mentioned throughout, was really developing kind of a communications guide where we have some of those messages that are more templates that we can build off of. Every messaging does need to be unique, but in some cases, we have a situation where there's a situation at a building and we want to just alert parents to this happened today, this is what you can expect, or what, maybe what your child might talk about tonight. And so it's helpful to have those messages at the ready. So I've started building this guide. This is why this is in the developing phase and pulling together those similar messages in one place. The second strategy in this area has to do with building and better defining our brand, so continuing with the communication guide. Part of that guide is also taking a look at our branding assets and what do people know as Franklin Public Schools when they see it. So you'll see all of our logos here represented from all of our buildings and for the, across the district rather. And so we want to make sure that when our teachers, our leaders, our staff, anybody is using our imagery that we're, one, making sure it aligns with our mission, our vision, our values, but two, also not just grabbing some random clip art from the internet and then putting things together or grabbing some random colors. We really want to make sure that when people see things, they know it as the gold and the black and the white of the district. Or in the cases of the elementaries and the middle school, we kind of have the athletic gold color interspersed in there as well. So part of this tactic is putting those things into the communication guide so that staff knows where to grab it from and that things look more consistent and unified across the district. And then the second tactic here really has to do with And then the second tactic here really has to do with how do we use this guide with our staff? So what does that look like as far as implementing it, making sure staff is aware of it? As we go into next school year, I plan to have a draft of the guide ready to go with some of the pieces that I've mentioned so that staff can turn to that if they're building their email signature or they want to put together some kind of promotion and they want to know what colors to use. So I plan to have that ready for the start of pre-session in the fall. Our second area, under the communications plan, is looking at our internal stakeholders. And when I say internal stakeholders, what that really means is more you as board members, our leaders, our staff. How are we best communicating to them, to everyone within the organization? And what do those communications look like? And fostering pride and recognition through those, through those communications. So this first strategy, increasing the quality and accessibility of one-way, two-way, and passive communication. Again, one-way, meaning when we broadcast something out to our staff or various audiences within our staff, our internal stakeholders. Two-way, where we're broadcasting something out, but we're also asking for feedback back. Might be something like a survey or just asking for open feedback. And then passive communication, how do we best store our resources in a place where staff knows they can go and get it when they need to? So that's what this strategy encompasses. And the first tactic in this area, one that's close to, it's done and it's there, and we're just, we're deciding how to best utilize it. We started this last year with building an employee hub, kind of an intranet that our staff can log into and access with their school district credentials. And this is just a place where we have our department pages. So we'll have an HR, we have an HR page there, and so the HR department has put the employee handbook there. We have teaching and learning resources that are being put there so staff know where to go to get this material. We also put in there all of our, our digital websites and apps and things that staff will access. There's copies of our staff newsletters, so if there's something we shared out, staff is looking for it. They know they can go to the employee hub and find it. We really wanted to kind of consolidate all of that into one place. The part that's still ongoing with this is making sure that staff think to go there and promoting it and linking back to things or finding a specific reason for them to go there. And so we're going to be doing that as we go into the fall. Second tactic in this area is increasing the consistency of our district and department messaging through our Franklin Find Staff Newsletter. So much like we do our district newsletter, we do a newsletter specifically for our staff to just keep them up to date with all the different happenings across our departments and across the district. We do that bi-weekly. This came from previous feedback from staff where they were feeling like there was an overwhelming amount of messages because this department would send an email and that department would send an email. And so this, we really started on about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, where we started this staff newsletter and said, we need to consolidate this and put this into one place. So my role in that is working with the district leadership and collecting those little stories and things and organizing them by department, and then we put that out every other Wednesday. So we want to continue to do that, obviously. We feel that this is a good vehicle for us to communicate with the staff. But then the next step in this is really surveying staff and finding out about their use as an end user, receiving this information, what that looks like, and where we can improve the utilization of that and incorporate the employee hub as a kind of static place for them to go to as well. This third area, review the, third tactic, review the efficiency of our employee engagement survey. So as you know, we do an employee engagement survey every year. We, this tactic is in the gathering phase because we have the employee engagement survey that we've done last year. And now we're going to be issuing that again to staff here soon. So when we were developing this tactic, we thought about making changes to that. Well, we don't want to make changes right now because we're about to put it out and we want to be able to compare data. So we're going to, we're going to continue with the same employee engagement survey so we can compare the data we get this year to the data we get last year. But then we're discussing options for reviewing that and figuring out what that'll look like going forward. The second strategy for internal stakeholders, this first tactic, this, this area, the strategy rather, gets into fostering pride through our internal communications and promoting us as a better place to work. So this first tactic is explore and create opportunities for increased frequency around staff recognition at the district supervisor to subordinate level and peer-to-peer level. So we're currently gathering ideas for that. In the past, we've had different recognition systems and they've all kind of phased out for one reason or another. And so we're looking at, we're gathering some ideas right now and trying to decide if we can launch something into next year that could be at those various levels, something if a principal wants to acknowledge a teacher, if a teacher wants to acknowledge a fellow teacher, or a custodial worker wants to acknowledge a fellow custodial worker. We're trying to, we've got a few ideas cooking and we're not sure which ones we're going to use yet. But we're hoping to start next year with some of those in place so people know how to recognize each other or will be expected to, whenever they receive recognition, kind of how that system works. The second tactic here is to create ways to showcase staff and staff work in the district. So gathering some ideas for this area. One thing that we did do recently, kind of, I think was right after the holidays, we did a staff survey where we were collecting staff testimonials about working here. And so we plan to include those and build those into the HR website as a recruitment effort and use those for upcoming recruitment efforts that we do if we do job fairs and things like that. We're also exploring other ideas for how to recognize staff at various timeframes throughout the year. We all just, we're at the recognition dinner recently where we honored our 25 through 27-year employees. Well, the lifespan of someone staying in education that long may not, may not be realistic. So how can we honor somebody at three years or five years or 10 years or 15 years? And so we're talking about ideas for that. And so if we have those in place going into next year, we would communicate with the staff as we head into the next school year. This last area is the external stakeholders. So families, local area businesses, our community members. This looks at how we communicate with our external stakeholders and the tactics or the strategies and tactics within. So similar to the internal stakeholders, this first strategy area looks at our one-way, our two-way and our passive communication with our families and community members. So this first one is review and evaluate and continue to streamline our information through building level and district newsletters. We've got a really good system with our newsletters now that we've been working on for the last two and a half years. And so I work with the secretaries directly on that. Whenever someone wants to put something in our newsletters, it comes to me as the communications person. And we decide, is the building newsletter the best? Is the district newsletter the best? Is this better as an announcement some other place? And so I've been really working hard with them and we have a really good system for kind of coordinating that. So then things are consistent also across schools when we do communicate. Some things that we're planning for with that is reviewing what's working in our newsletters and maybe trimming down where we can. Our newsletters have become more popular, so everybody wants to put everything into them. So how can we trim those articles back? Or when can we point to or link out to something in another place where we're playing with some ideas there? So it doesn't get too long and overbearing for people. The second tactic, review, evaluate, and implement an updated parent survey to gather feedback from families on our communication and information sharing efforts. So this will be part of the overall parent survey that's going to be going out here before the end of the school year. So the questions are drafted, we're just fine tuning them. And then our leadership team is working to identify what our partnership priorities are through the survey. And then we're going to use this as a baseline survey so that we can compare it as we go into next year. So there will be some specific communication questions in there that I plan to gather data and look at and figure out how to improve some of our communication efforts once we get that feedback. And the third tactic was review, evaluate, and update the district website to better organize our resources. This was something I'd hoped to do this school year. It didn't happen. We're gathering though currently, we've got some pictures on our website that are a little outdated. So before we head into the summer, plan to get some newer photos, some fresher photos as early as tomorrow and include those in there. I'm also evaluating with our vendor what a refresh of the website would look like and looking at the menu structure because we've got a lot of pages and where can we consolidate and streamline that down and just kind of, kind of bring it up. I think the website is close to five years old almost, it might be in the four range. So, and I also, obviously with the new superintendent coming on, I want to incorporate a vision that she would have for that as well. So that's in the research and budget and figure out what we can do phase right now. And then this last area, this last strategy, fostering pride through our communications that promote us, again, better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community. The first tactic, continue to build and evaluate the use of our social media. I think we've got a good handle on our district level social media. We're regularly posting to Instagram, to Facebook, to Twitter, and monitoring the analytics that come back. I'll share those with you here in a little bit. The second tactic, evaluate and explore creating an annual school district publication. This was something I shared with you in January. Been just kind of seeing what other districts put out, and I see annual reports, kind of nice polished, almost magazine-like pieces. And so I've been gathering some ideas from other districts and investigating some costs for that. We've been talking timeframe and possibly targeting that this would go out maybe next spring in March of '23. In there, we would hope to put stories that showcase the positive things that are happening in our school district and just schools in general, knowing that the biennial budget talks would be occurring and we would have the opportunity to convey how, how to support education through the funding that we receive from the state level. So that's the hope with that, and that'll be worked on over the course of this next year. So that was just kind of an overview of the different communication plan tactics. Some things I've been actively involved in, I already mentioned the employee hub. Again, this has been working great. One little anecdote, I know it's working because as we get a new staff member, there's a little behind-the-scenes thing where sometimes their account doesn't work right away and they're constantly contacting me like, hey, I need to get in here. So, oh, good, people are pointing them to this. So we're trying to sync that so people's accounts when they are hired are just ready to go. And I'm close, I want that to work because that'll be less emails, which is always a good thing. I was very actively involved in communicating the superintendent search updates, as you know. So we made the decision to have the one page on the website where we just posted short updates. As that process moved along, we had a consistent look with the superintendent search update. Anytime we posted to social media or in our newsletters, people knew to see that and to know that there was some new information with that. So that was just a big communication effort throughout the spring here, or the winter to the spring. One thing we've started doing more of is the, there's the Franklin Neighbors publication that goes to some of the communities within Franklin. It doesn't necessarily hit all of the, all the mailboxes in the city. But they are ad-driven, and so they are very much looking for content. And so I had talked with them over the last year, and they were just looking for stories from school. So this has been a great place for us to put stories about things happening. And so we've, we've had, we've had something featured in there each month over this, almost over the whole school year. I think we started in the late fall. So they have been great about taking our content and putting it in there. And so I plan to continue that relationship with them. Living in Muskego, we get the Muskego Neighbors magazine where we live. And so one thing I saw that Muskego's doing that I really like is they do a senior spotlight where they get information from their seniors at the high school, and they pick somebody and they do kind of a little feature on them, where are they going, future plans, what are they involved in? So I'm looking at possibly doing that as a showcase as we get into next year. Reunification messaging, we had a reunification drill last week, as you know. A big piece of that was getting our broadcast system to be able to do text messaging when we needed to, to not only our families but also to staff, so we could go through the parts of that drill and get people where they needed to go. There's some behind-the-scenes wonkiness, for lack of a better term, with that. But we were able to use it for the drill and we figured out what things we need to shore up. And so I'm working with the different systems we have that talk to each other to make it so when we need to get a message out, text message, we can, we can do that fairly efficiently. So we're, we've got it in place, we just have to shore up some of the phone numbers behind the scenes. But that's worked really well. And the feedback from people, when we did our first text message out to families, we had them fill out a form, and so I worked with the vendor to fix those issues. And I actually just communicated with a few people from that list today, and they checked some things and said it was working. I haven't heard from somebody where it's not working yet. So that's been great to see that we have that in place. Our different recognitions, I kind of used this similar look over the course of this last year. And so I'm toying with changing that as we go into next year and just kind of freshening this up a bit. But our recognition's everything for staff to, to different months that were represented. As an example, like Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. One idea I have for those months where we honor people from all different backgrounds is to maybe not use as much text, because as you can see, there's a lot of text on there and it might be a little hard to read. So I worry that people might pass that up. So that's some feedback I got anecdotally from a few people. And so I might try to just make them more visually appealing and link out to other resources as we build those going into next year. We had our staff recognition for our retirees and our honorees this past week. And so a big part of that was, in my role, was doing the design work, which I love Toy Story, so I was happy to do that. So we did a Toy Story theme for that, but we also collected videos about our retirees. And so I was able to edit those together and put that together as a presentation. And then also collect a lot of photos and just make that really a nice thing that honored our retirees and our honorees that are leaving us. So, or retirees that are leaving us, rather. So that was just, that was a personally fun one, but also took a lot to get together. As you know, the music trailer came, so we have the new music trailer for the music program. So I was helpful with the design of that, Umps Leadership from Umps. And then Mr. Hein had done some kind of graphic ideas. And so I kind of took their ideas, incorporated some feedback from our music teachers and from Umps leadership. And we got together what is really a very nicely put together outside wrap around that vehicle. So the thing I'm really proud of with this is it represents our colors, it represents our everything. It's got our, you know, logos on there. And so when this is taken to events, it really shows pride in what we're doing with our music program. These have just been things we've always continued on, our district and our building level newsletters. I did pull some analytics for you. So as we look at the clicks to the newsletter, because as you know, when the newsletter goes out, people have to click and go to it. What we've said in the past was, when we send this out, we send it to about 5,500 of our student families. And that could be anywhere from one to four parents or guardians that it goes to, just depending on different family situations. And so our goal has been to aim for that red line, kind of that 4,000. The interesting thing now, as I've been studying this over the last two and a half years as we've been doing this, that kind of trend is consistent with what it was last year. So the beginning of the year is on the left side, people are paying attention, school year's starting. They want to know what's going on. And then where it kind of goes back up in the middle, that was in January, coming off of a holiday break, probably want to pay more attention to what's, you know, starting out a new year, not a new school year, but a new year. And then it kind of trickles off a little bit in the spring, and then it'll go back up again as we resume in the fall. So it's been just interesting to study that, investigating reasons for why it would kind of dip in the middle. We did kind of change some timeframes. We've realized like, don't put out maybe a huge newsletter on the day before Thanksgiving break or the day before spring break, nobody's reading it, everybody's probably taking off. But it's just helpful to kind of know, like, we can hit parents with certain messages at these times when we know we're getting the most, the most view, so we can use that to our communication advantage, if you will. This is data I pulled for when those newsletter clicks are open. This is representative, the blue lines are day one, when we send it out, and then day two, day three, day four, day five. So the reason I share this with you again, as I shared in the past, is the fact that we're still getting, if you look at the lowest little bar in each of those sections, we're still getting, it says like 248, 173, 158 on the fifth day, means that that's still hitting a big chunk of people. Whether it's people returning to the newsletter to try to find something, or maybe it's the first time they got to it in their inbox. So that's just helpful for us to know, like, this is a good vehicle for us to get that information out. Another thing that we have in the works, we've, we've had this and we just haven't really utilized it as well. But we have a YouTube channel, just a communications for FPS YouTube channel. So as we've built videos, they've been stored here. So what I want to do is I would kind of want to brand that. You have to get 100 subscribers, which you can see we were at 94. But as of now, we are at 100.
But he just subscribed.
No, I did, I sent an email today, I sent an email to 10 colleagues and said, go here and just subscribe. Because once you brand, then you can change the part of the address so it says something with Franklin Public Schools. You can put a banner up and have it, you know, you can kind of brand it with your colors and scheme. And you can do some more creative things once you're, once you're past 100 subscribers. So now that we have that, we can organize some playlists. So you can see some of the things on here are 4K Parent Preview Nights. It would be nice if we had that as a playlist. So if anyone looking for 4K information came here or found their way here, that would be organized for them. Any of our impact stories that we've done in the past, or you can see there's a past graduation. You know, we can kind of organize that better. So that's something I'm just kind of toying with. Our social media, again, as I mentioned, continues to be a good way for us to push things out, and we see high engagements. And so what I did is I pulled some analytics for you on that. So this is from Facebook, this is just from January to today, or Friday, rather. So our top performing posts, so the topmost post, and I wish Dr. Khan was here to see this because his wife was a big part of this. We had some Muslim parents that got together around Ramadan and created some food to share with the high school staff. And so we had shared that on social media as just a great community, just community coming together thing. And the reach for that was, was higher than most of our other posts. And when we look at this, we look at reach, we look at the number of likes and reactions, and then the comments. And those all being very high for that top post means that a lot of people noticed this, saw this, shared it on, just a great thing. Some of the others there in the top five, the second one, don't tell her this, but this was the announcement of the new superintendent. That was number two. And then the third one was our FHS Autos Program Competition. We had some students that qualified for a local autos competition, and that one also got some very high engagement. The fourth one was our Saber Robotics. When they went to state, we had reshared that, I believe, from the high school, and that post took off as well. And then our fifth one was honoring Officer Pep Rocky when we had National Law Enforcement Day in early January. So those were kind of the top five, and there's some others there. But just great to see the engagements that they're having through Facebook. Through Instagram, these were the top posts, and so I'll tell you some interesting things I garner from this. So the first post is, this past Saturday was the prom. So these are some pictures from prom. We, our students are more on Instagram, obviously, than they are on Facebook. So this tells us that, and you can see kind of the age range of people that are looking at your content. And so this was And so this was obviously viewed a lot by our high school students and so that was the topmost post over this last five to six months. The other ones, the second one was...
Thursday, Franklin High School.
Oh yeah, that was a gold walk. So at the high school, if we're honoring someone that's going off to a state level or national level competition, they do a gold walk where the team that's leaving or the group or the organization that's leaving, they walk through and everyone kind of gets in the hallway and cheers them on, the band leads them through, they have the marching band lead them through. So that was a post, that was our actual robotics, forensics, FBLA, our visual arts groups, were all around the same time moving on to a state level competition and so that was a very high post as well. Special thanks to, although, we had some people come and speak that created a documentary that was featured, I think it was on HBO, and they spoke to students and so that was number three. Number four, number four is interesting, so we just had the Culture Fest last week, very well-attended event, very popular event, lots of great social media interaction. So that being the fourth post in the last six months, and it's not even a week old yet, is huge. Like, that is, that speaks to that and I'm curious to go back and look at that a little bit later and just see how it fares. And then the fifth one was, one of our teachers at the high school, Ms. Bisog, pulled together at the end of March because it was National, it was National Women's History Month, she pulled together all of her female students and honored and recognized them just for being in a typically very male-dominated field by taking some of our tech ed classes. And so she did a really nice thing with it, we took some pictures and that one also was very popular. So just great to see those carry on through social media. So I like sharing that with you so you can kind of see the pulse of what's going on. That is all I have for you. So that was part one, part two, and I'll take any questions if you have them on anything with communications.
Do we have any questions?
I'll ask a question.
Please, yeah.
Just because it came up in community comment, Michelle was asking about advertising that we're having school board meetings. I know we don't necessarily advertise about things like that generally, but I mean, we're doing board notes after, I don't know how we would feel about, on the day of a board meeting, putting something out on Facebook or Instagram saying, hey, there's a board meeting tonight.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We can, I can, I would do that at the direction of the board, we can definitely do that.
Is that what you were referring to when you said there was no invitation, but just the general board meeting? Or the time before?
Yeah, because in 2019, there was the agenda posted at times, meeting, and then just, it hasn't, so I'm like, if you're hosting the board meeting docs tomorrow, why not, maybe some more parents will come because I'm kind of, you know, this is our audience.
Sure.
We want more people here.
Sure, sure. We can, I mean, yeah, we can definitely do that.
If it's not too much trouble.
No.
I'm going to be communicating to make sure someone's picking up my daughter. Great presentation, I'm going to take a moment, I'm sorry.
But just, I mean, the board docs, I think, has been pretty well.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's not maybe your top performer, but...
No, I do think, and we've had a good board section in our district newsletter area that obviously invites people to come speak beforehand. I think what we could do too, in the district newsletter, is just remind people, like, this is where everything is kept, like, we haven't really advertised board docs in a while, so maybe just reminding people, this is where to look, to see when upcoming meetings are, and then if we want to set a few of the next meetings and see how that goes on social media. Sometimes I will say, when I do share the board briefs on social media, they don't get any engagement. So I think, I don't know if that's just because people are just scanning them, viewing them and then moving on and not really...
Yeah, I mean, they might read them, it's not really maybe something that you're going to like or share with your friends.
Exactly, that's what I was just going to say.
So it might not capture people's...
Yep, that's exactly what I was going to say.
They'd share it.
So, so yeah, right. So I like doing them, I think it's a good way to say this is what we're doing, so.
I have a question about the, under your second big area was the Employee Engagement Survey and you mentioned that, you know, you didn't want to change it this year because you want to be able to compare data.
Yep.
At some point, you're just going to have to bite the bullet and do it, right?
Oh, totally, yep.
Like, at some point, we're not going to have comparable data.
Right, right.
So...
But I don't know, I don't, and they're both not here right now, I'm not sure, do you know how old the Employee Engagement Survey questions are? Do you know how far back those go? I thought it was just last year.
I think it's really about three years.
Yeah.
That we, and we'd want to conclude this year matching questions to what we asked in the beginning of the year, but certainly next year.
I see.
They could start new questions.
I was thinking you were speaking across year, but it's a twice bi-annual.
Yeah, there's some pulse surveys in between, but the one that employees take now is like more questions that we gave at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we're going to get through this one and then look at, okay, are these questions really giving us what we want, now we can compare across this timeframe and go from there.
Anything else? Who knows?
I think you're doing a great job.
Yep.
With all the pieces working together and I just thank you for somehow managing to juggle 25...
Where we were five years ago and where we are now is truly astonishing, so.
It's not even the same, like...
Yeah, well, even just three years ago, yeah.
Yeah, I have fun with it, it's always something new and it's all different creative aspects, writing, photo, video and all things that I like communicating, so, yeah, it's fun. So I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, SWSA update, Ms. Wackowski and Dr. Miller, please.
Ms. Wackowski, are you still there?
I'm here, but Judy, you're covering it, right?
Correct. I just wanted to make sure you were able to interject something.
I'm still here.
Yeah, wonderful. Well, Ms. Wackowski and I had a chance to collaborate a little bit on this. The report isn't really incredibly long. SWSA is in transition, as you know, because there's a new director that's been hired. Also, the legislators are no longer in session, but what you can see in the report were the strategic areas and perhaps, you know, at a future meeting, if the board would ever like to discuss any of these areas, we could put that as an agenda item and you could talk, we could talk about them further in our engagement with SWSA. The legislative updates were kind of self-explanatory here, I thought the Marquette poll was kind of interesting for you to see how people were feeling about education right now. And then, just as Ms. Wackowski and I were talking, I think our important work right now is to engage our business leaders more, if we can, in understanding the work we do and the needs that we have as a district and focusing on that next biennial budget and ensuring that we have the funding we need to have good schools, to produce a good workforce. So, is there anything you'd like to add to that, Ms. Wackowski?
I think that covers it.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciated you putting together the talking points for us, I mean, they weren't, there were just a few, but that's all we need in preparation for our event tomorrow and so I think that probably going forward, some additional training along those lines so that we can begin to engage, you know, one-on-one with people to address those legislative concerns is something I'd be interested in.
Okay, thank you.
It was interesting with the legislative, legislative updates and the recalculation of the district report cards. I wonder if the right question was asked, I mean...
I don't know.
If, I mean, are they the same as what, how are they different from what the statistics showed last year with this year's information? Was last year's information, does that, does that mean last year's DPI report card was better? Or we, they think it was better? Or what kind of information are we giving?
It's kind of a fruitless exercise to do that comparison because you're asking the data to do something that it wasn't designed to do.
Exactly.
So...
It was pretty politically motivated and related to COVID.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comment? Thank you. 2022-23 Board Meeting Schedule. So the board meeting, the board schedule, starting in September, will continue to be the second and, second and fourth Wednesday of the month, with the exception of December and November, and then obviously the summer. So those are the dates for next year, I don't know if there's any conflicts with that, but Ann had a, Ann had a good, Ann had a good suggestion and maybe we can work on that going forward, maybe you'll talk about it, Ann.
I was just going to say, I think it's important as a district that we try not to schedule things on the night of a board meeting. Now, obviously, there's going to be things that happen, you can't say no, you know, basketball games or, you know, whatever, you can't avoid everything, but I think it just would be nice if we could work to avoid scheduling major events on the night of a board meeting so that we aren't pulled between, you know, different things.
So for example, last year, Ann caught that our originally Senior Honors Night was scheduled to be the same night as a board meeting.
Tonight, yeah.
So you caught that months in advance and it was okay and, you know, I would like to go to the National Honor Society induction, but, you know, Jimmy's there taking pictures and picking up the other child.
Good job, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just, you know, obviously in a district the size, you're always going to have 14 things happening, but just, you know, if we as board members are, you know, trying to get to events, it'd be nice if we weren't trying to...
District-wide, district-level.
Right.
Stuff. We'll just keep an eye on it.
And I can discuss it with Ms. Bennen, too.
So anybody else have any further comment or conflict with the meeting schedule for next year?
The only thing I know we've talked about before, and I think that this avoids it, with that annual meeting being on the 16th last...
Back-to-school night.
It was always back-to-school night, kind of overlapped with that.
And it's a prior.
And so I think we fixed that by moving it up to that.
By moving it up a week.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anyone else? Treasures Report is available in Board Docs. Back to item 11 and we'll go to Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have any liaison reports?
Debbie and I attended the reunification drill that was referenced earlier in, I think, two different presentations. I mean, it was astonishing, I hope we never have to use it, but a lot of work went into planning should a crisis ever occur in the district and multiple local professional, the police, the fire, were all involved in this, in this drill and it was, I think it, from my observation standpoint, went about as, went well for a first trial run. Obviously, areas of improvement were identified, but we're prepared to, I hope we never have to use it.
Well, I think that brings up something too loud, Dr. Miller, for her work in, in safety of the district, especially in light of yesterday's tragedy. But thank you for the work you've done with safety, I know it's a, I know it's something that is, that is a major concern for you and it's, it makes us feel better, even though some of the stuff we can't discuss for obvious reasons, it makes us feel better as a district to know that things are thought of and thought of, thought of ahead of time and planned for and we do as much as we can and hopefully that's, hopefully that's enough.
I would just add that, you know, in this community, your police and fire are remarkable people and they'll do anything for the schools, so working together is what it takes to make this community and our schools as safe as they can be. And honestly, I'll be real glad to have it off my shoulders.
It was a lot of work, wasn't it?
It's not the work, it's just the fear every, every day, so I'm ready. You've earned it.
Yeah.
I did, I did attend the CISA Annual Meeting last week. It's a lot of procedural things and much like SWSA, there is a new executive director, so the sort of, things are in limbo. Franklin's spot on the, on the Board of Control will be up next year, so Franklin is on the Board of Control again for this year. There was, there were three elections for new people on the Board of Control, which has 11 people, and there's one new member on the Board of Control, two incumbents, so... And the, the Board of Control meeting after, after the annual meeting, I think, was a new record of maybe five minutes, so. Does anybody else have any Board Liaison Reports?
I will be in transition from my community relations or whatever, but I just wanted to let everybody know we are signed up for the Fourth of July Parade, so I hope everyone's planning to march in the Fourth of July Parade. And then the other upcoming event in the community will be National Night Out, which is August 1st, the first Monday of August. Save the date.
And we are hosting, we are hosting but working with the city on having the Vietnam, the Vietnam Wall.
The Wall of Hills.
Memorial Wall, and it'll be at the, it'll be at the high school from the 30th of June until, I think, I think the 3rd?
3rd.
Thanks, Angela. I think the 3rd. So, so please see that, I've heard it's very moving. I know I plan to be up there and spend some time. Ms. Bennen will be up there and spend some time there too and hopefully meet some community members.
Is this something that's open?
24 hours.
24 hours, okay.
And there's a lot of volunteers who are vets who are there.
Awesome, okay.
School and Community Engagement Reports. I did go to the, I did go to the honors night last Wednesday night, said a few words, it was, it seems like a great class and they all are, of course, but it's a great class, great young people. One of the highlights of the night was when the, the gentleman from West Point got up and we have two, a young man and a young lady going to West Point next year, 1,200, 1,200 kids in the...
In the country.
In the country. And they, 13,000 applications and two were chosen from Franklin, so...
It's a big deal.
Something to be, something to be pretty proud of.
Yeah, that was, that was really impressive.
I have an exciting community engagement announcement, which is that I will now be one of the volunteer old-time school marm's at the Wayland School for the third grade school trips. So I'm being trained on that activity.
Way to go.
Yeah.
You have to wear a bonnet.
I get to wear a bonnet.
She, she made her own costume.
I made my own costume.
All right, anyone else, School and Community Engagement?
I was at Culture Fest last week, which was just fascinating. I did not have enough time to get to everything, but it was really exciting to see, we need more space for that, oh my gosh, like, it was body to body, everybody had food and there was entertainment and it was, it was very cool and it was really just, I mean, it was, it was just really neat to see so many different people and see how many, how many people are here in Franklin and in our schools and that was just really neat.
And it was largely a student-driven effort, which is, I think, is the, kind of the coolest thing.
Yeah, my daughter was, my daughter's in that club and she said, I asked her how many people and she said, well, I was the counter and there was 395, thanks for asking that.
It's a good question.
But it was a lot of, it was considerably more than last year and, yeah, it seems to be growing, so.
Yeah, I would have said it was more than 300, so, or 400, you know, almost 400.
Are you doubting her counting?
No, I'm not doubting her counting abilities, I'm sure, but I mean, it just, it felt like more and I was there for like the last, you know, 45 minutes to an hour, I wasn't even there probably when it was busiest, so. Anyway, that was really cool. And then, one other thing I want to talk about and I kind of mentioned it earlier, I was able to go today to the high school, I know we had our seniors here, I don't know, a month ago or so with some of their capstone projects, but the engineering students had their capstone presentations today and I was able to go and, and learn about that and talk about fascinating. These kids were tasked with finding a real-world problem early in the year and they have worked through the process this whole year of solving that problem. And just the scope of things that they came up with to talk about, from improving ice scrapers to improving golf grips to trying to figure out a different way for hospital beds to turn patients, so it's not so labor-intensive for the staff. Or a wheelchair and a stabilizing device so that if you're, say, an amputee and trying to get out of your wheelchair, the wheelchair doesn't tip and cause a fall. It was just really fascinating to see their different presentations and we had, I want And we had, I want to say it was about 10 engineers who came in to actually, the kids had to present to them as if they were doing a professional presentation. And I'll tell you, they asked some really tough questions, it was very professional. So just a really, just another aspect of what we, you know, what our schools offer our students, these truly real-life experiences of this is what, this is what the life of an engineer is. And it was, it was fascinating.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, item 12, School Board Meeting Debriefing, any comments?
I love having students here give us the presentations. And personally for me, as a Ben, former Ben Franklin mom, I knew those kids when they were teenagers. So to see them now, all grown up, going off to the middle school next year, like, that was pretty fun. Those are some good kids.
Their writing was fantastic.
I want, you are going to send us the presentation, right?
I am going to click, I'm going to click on the link.
I want to click every link.
I will do that, yeah.
I got to find out about that ball that hit him in the face.
Hit him in the face.
Blood and...
Blood. Great Chicago Fire.
Yes. Was it the cow that kicked over the...
I think that's what was being implied.
Anyway, I appreciate having the students come.
We do intend next year to keep a similar format, I'm assuming that's okay with the board?
Yes.
You know, going back to, okay, because some principals have asked, I just want to make sure. My assumption was that's largely been the feedback with the...
With the kids, yes.
Each school taking a turn, sort of thing, okay.
They're always welcome.
All right, Future Agenda Items, Friends of Franklin, Recognition, 22-23 CISA One Contract, SWSA Agreement for 22-23, and also Budget and Staffing Presentation, Graduation Update, Coherence Plan End-of-Year Report, Board Retreat Discussion, Annual Academic Standards Adoptions, and you can read on and on. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned at 8:12, thank you, everyone.